Good evening, everyone. I am the Chair of the City of Saginaw Planning Commission, and this is a regular meeting of the City Planning Commission. When the petition, special land use, or site plan approval request in which you are interested is called, please be prepared to speak. Once you are recognized, give your name and address to the Secretary for the record. After the appellant's presentation, they may comment. The purpose of the public comment is to address the commission. Speakers shall address their remarks to the commission as a whole. Remarks shall not be addressed to individual commission members, city staff, or the audience. Speakers may ask general questions about the subject of a presentation. All such questions will be referred to city staff for appropriate follow-up. Speakers shall not ask questions of specific commission members. Each speaker is limited to three minutes and may only speak once. Speakers should limit their remarks to business within the jurisdiction of the commission. The purpose of a public hearing is to address the commission with regard to the subject of the relevant hearing and not speak on other topics. Speakers shall address their remarks to the commission as a whole and not to individual commission members, city staff, or the audience. The applicant whose application is the subject of the hearing or their designated representative shall be the main presenter and will be allowed 10 minutes for their presentation. Each additional speaker commenting on the subject of the meeting will be limited to three minutes. Speakers may only speak once on the hearing. Each additional speaker commenting on the subject of the meeting will be limited to three minutes. Following any initial comment, I will ask for additional comments twice more, and then we will close the public hearing with a vote. The Board will make a motion to approve the project at hand with a second, and then the Board, or excuse me, the commission will have discussion and if they wish before you ask if all are in favor of the proposal. The motion always has to be in favor of the project and then can be denied. Please remember that, commission members. The meeting is videotaped, so it's important that only one person speak at a time and the audience observe respect for the speaker. An affirmative vote of the majority of the members present is necessary to grant a petition, special land use, or site plan approval. Recommendations on all petitions made by the commission are then forwarded to the city council. Are there any questions? If there are none, will the Secretary please call the roll?
Yes, and don't forget to also tell me where you are located, where you're broadcasting from. Tom Brayley? Fred Zwerko? Fenobia Dallas?
Present, Saginaw, Michigan.
Robert Hanley?
Present, City of Saginaw.
Yolanda Jones?
Present, Saginaw, Michigan.
Brenda Moore?
Saginaw, Michigan.
You're muted, I didn't hear anything.
Present, Saginaw, Michigan.
Jim Nightingale? And Bill Ostas?
Present from Saginaw, Michigan.
Alright, Madam Chair, you have a call.
Thank you. The item, next item on the agenda is the approval of our minutes from March 23, 2021. Do I have a motion to approve those minutes?
So move, Brenda.
Support Nash.
Thank you. It has been moved and seconded to approve the minutes from March 23, 2021. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Abstentions? Thank you, the motion is passed. The next item on the agenda is the approval of the agenda for May 25, 2021. Do I hear a motion?
So move, Hanley.
Support Nash.
Thank you. It has been moved and seconded to approve the agenda of May 25, 2021. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Thank you. The agenda is approved as presented. We now open up the commission meeting for any public comment. Again, if you wish to comment in general, please acknowledge by indicating that you are available to speak, give your name and your address to the Secretary. Is there anyone wishing to speak during the public comment section? Is there anyone who is willing or needs to speak during the public comment section? Hearing none, we will move on to the new business. Business J21-0076, rezoning request for 3121 Sheridan Avenue. I would ask that the appellant please make themselves available to give us a presentation on their request. Again, please indicate who you are and where you're located, your address.
Hi.
Thank you. Go ahead, Mike.
This is Mike McPherson, personal consultant for Zeremba Group. Matt Casey is with Zeremba Group, he's also on the meeting here. We are here before you to request rezoning for a parcel that's at the northeast corner of Sheridan Avenue and Arnold Street. The parcel is approximately 1.18 acres. It's currently zoned R1, we're requesting rezoning to B2. It is part of the current church property, which we will have proposed to split off of that parent parcel. Adjacent to the north and the east is all industrial properties, and again, the church is located directly to our south. We're looking to develop this site. It's in line with the general business zoning. And obviously, we'd come back before you guys with site plans and such if the rezoning request is approved. With that, I mean, I am here, Matt is here with Zeremba. If you guys have any questions at all, we're happy to answer them.
Thank you. Are there any comments from the public on this rezon request? Are there any comments from the public on this rezoning request? Are there any comments from the public on this rezoning request? Hearing none, we will close this portion of the public hearing, and I ask that a motion be made to close the hearing?
So move, Brenda.
And Ostas?
Thank you. It has been moved and seconded to close the public hearing on case number J21-0076. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? The public hearing is closed. I now ask for a motion from the commission on case number J21-0076.
So move, Brenda.
Port Jones?
It has been moved and seconded to approve the rezoning request for 3121 Sheridan Avenue. Are there any questions or comments from the commission members?
This is Bob Hanley. To the staff, is there any feedback from neighbors in the adjoining R1 district?
This is Bob Gulline. I received one question, I guess, from one of the neighbors. They were just asking what that was about. He was not willing to leave his name or address, but he did comment or in the affirmative that he did not have any objections to the rezoning.
I've got a question for Bob. Bob, how are the other businesses feeling about this? Have they been talked to?
Yeah.
Because you've got Family Dollar and you have Gray Giant. You have both of those over there. How would they feel?
Yeah, no, I did not call them. They did though however yet notices sent to them. So no one has commented back to me, I never got any feedback from them.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions from the commission members? Hearing none. Motion on the floor is to approve the rezon for 3121 Sheridan from R1 to B2. Do we need to take a roll call?
I just make one clarification here that this is the parcel A split from 3121 and not the whole parcel on that motion, please.
I see, okay, thank you. Let me restate that. Case number J21-0076 is a request to rezon parcel A of 3121 Sheridan from R1 to B2. Should we call a roll call?
Sure.
Okay.
Okay. Fenobia Dallas?
Yes.
Robert Hanley?
Yes.
Yolanda Jones?
Yes.
Brenda Moore?
Yes.
Jack Nash?
Yes.
Bill Ostas?
Yes.
Motion was approved. This will still be recommended to city council for their approval.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is public hearing case J21-0077, special use permit for one establishment at 1519 South Michigan. Is the appellant here to give us a presentation on this proposal?
Yes, Madam Chair, can you hear me okay? Okay, thank you. My name is Andy Andre from Avanti Development Group, 330 Enterprise Court, Bloomfield Hills, Michigan, 48302. The property that we're talking about this evening that we have an application in for is 1519 South Michigan Avenue. It's at the intersection of Michigan and Fraser Street. Currently, there's an existing building there. It's partially occupied. And what we're proposing is to do a reconstruction of that building and repurposing it for the applicant's use. Real quick to talk about the brand is Joyology. And currently, that group, Joyology, has a number of existing locations that are in operation, including Grand Rapids, Centerline, Burton, Battle Creek, Bay City, Redding. So this is a very well-established group that knows how to operate facilities. And bringing that to this location, what we're proposing to do is, this is an existing partial two-story building, Madam Chair, and what we're proposing to do is do a partial removal of that upper floor. I did an evaluation of it last week. We've done an extensive evaluation of the building. We can retrofit the building to do a removal of the second floor because, very frankly, it's not needed, it's not necessary, and it's a little bit cumbersome for what the intended use is. And so what we're doing is proposing to do a removal of that, simplify it, and then do improvements to the building itself. We are proposing the parking area adjacent to the west of the building, open area. We also have some on-street parking that we're proposing that we'll be reconstructing. There's some current on-street parking right now, but it doesn't meet city standards. So we'll do an upgrade to bring those spaces into conformance. We also have some concrete replacement along the, within the right-of-way that needs to replace. We'll bring that up to city standard as well. The north side of the parking lot does adjacent to some residential, and so we are proposing a six-foot-high masonry screen wall all along that frontage, provide the buffering with the parking. We have LED parking lights that are proposed, and we've also incorporated street-scaping trees along both Fraser and Fayette. As I mentioned, for the building itself, we're proposing to do a removal. I've identified where that needs to be done, bearing walls and such, and it actually is pretty straightforward construction. We want to keep that existing foundation to be able to work off of that. The building itself, when we do a second story removal, we'll add an entrance feature that will be along Michigan. We'll also be building a parapet around the perimeter to give it a nice clean look from all sides. And the existing materials will be repaired and painted, and we provided a color palette in the submission package that we made. Also, to cap off information on the property itself, we do meet the stormwater criteria. We are providing storm drainage and detention prior to release out to Fraser Street. As part of the plans, we also included the buffering plan. So we feel that we're meeting the criteria on all the special land use and site plan requirements. And one of the items I think that is always important to know is the safety protocol that we have in place. Cameras were identified on the plans as well as we'll have security state at the property. So with that, I think we've hit on all the items for special land use and site plan and incorporated all that. And I think that's all I have. Be happy to answer any questions if it comes up through the commission. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Any comments from the general public? Please again state your name, your address, and your comments are limited to three minutes. Any comments from the general public? Any comments from the general public on this site plan review? Hearing none, I ask for a motion to close the public hearing on J21-0077.
So move, Brenda.
Second, Ostas.
It has been moved and seconded to close the public hearing on case J21-0077, site plan review for special use marijuana retailer establishment at 1519 South Michigan. I now ask for a motion from the commission to approve this site plan review.
So move.
Support, Jones.
It has been moved and seconded to approve the site plan review for case J21-0077. Are there any questions from the commission?
I have a question for the young man. How many jobs will this establishment bring?
Sure, that's a very good question. With the square footage, we're at about 3,600 square foot. It's a very comfortable location. I think during any one shift, we're probably looking at about 12 employees. So there's anywhere probably between 12 to 18 employees.
You got security and stuff? I don't remember hearing that, but I'm asking.
Yep, yep, let me hit on that again. So we have security protocols in place. Both, we identified that on the plan from security cameras, positioning the location. And we'll also have a security station, security personnel stationed at the facility as well. Yes.
Thank you.
I have a comment for Cassie. It seems I didn't get the site plan review from this special use permit. I think it got lost in my email.
Okay.
If you could just send that to me real quick, I'd appreciate it.
Sure.
Thank you. Any other questions from the commission?
Ostas? Andy, what is the total cost of your renovation, your investment?
You know, I haven't done a takeoff as of yet. Really, I really be hesitant to tell you. I know obviously it's going to be substantial because, let me tell you why. The construction costs on this one will be a little bit more based on some of the renovation that we have to do with the removal of the second floor. So I think more than probably the typical projects that you've seen, this will be a little bit higher. I haven't done the exact cost estimate though.
Okay, okay. And I know Brenda asked about, she was asking about jobs, you said about 12 to 18 people. What are you, do you have a manager that's working there?
Yeah, so there'll always be a manager, there'll always be a manager in place. And it's, you know, it's very typical to have overlapping shifts, and morning shift and afternoon shift, that type of thing.
Yep. One of the things I always watch with these industries coming in is the employees, their hourly wages and stuff like that, especially with your managers for the jobs that are being created. Are they part-time or how many full-time?
Honestly, I couldn't tell you that for the managers, from the manager's perspective, I don't know that answer. But I can tell you that, you know, between, like I mentioned, the 12 to 18 are full-time during that period.
Okay.
I can help, Andy. Hi, my name is Caitlin. I'm also here representing BRT Capital III. My address is 222 East Merrill Street, Suite 102. That's Birmingham, Michigan, 48009. I'm an administrative assistant here. I did the business application for Saginaw, and we do plan to hire about 12 to 18 full-time employees. The most important thing to us is first, you know, hiring employees within the city of Saginaw first and then looking outside and into the surrounding areas. And we plan to have about 10 part-time employees. Now we do, we will have a general manager for each store, and we'll have about two to three assistant managers. And all of them will be part-time, I mean, full-time.
Okay, yeah, because there's been other, with some of the other stores that are coming into the city, I was getting questions and where can I apply? Because a lot of the, you know, even the part-time or the full-time non-management jobs are paying like $15 an hour. So that's what they were looking at. So that's why I was asking, yeah.
We do pay our managers more than that. We have different positions. So our main position would be the bartender. That's where we'd have like the most help. Our bartenders, they're the ones on the floor showing the patients the flower and helping them get their medicine. And they are paid 13 to 15 an hour.
That's right, okay, thank you, I appreciate that.
No problem.
Yeah, and I understood about the managers, that I understood that would be a higher salary. Okay, thanks.
Yeah.
So, let me ask the question outside, Madam Chair. So you said you're gonna have between 12 and 18 full-time and 10 part-time?
Correct.
So this establishment is gonna be open, what, 24 hours or something?
We won't be 24 hours, no. I mean, we just expect, you know, a lot of daily customers. We have a lot of, we have a lot of employees at many of our stores, about 20 to 30 at each store.
Okay, okay.
We have a store that's, no problem.
Okay, thank you. City ordinance does establish limits on the time that they can be open.
Okay. I was just curious, because I heard 12 to 18, and I heard 10. I'm like, that's a lot of workers. Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions from the commission?
I have a question. When's your anticipated beginning for this construction modification that you have to make?
Sure, that's a very good question. So like I had mentioned, we've already done some preliminary investigation as to how we would do that. So the next steps would be that we need to put that on plan. We need to go get building permits and the such after that. So I would anticipate within probably the next several weeks we'd be developing those plans to come in for building permit. And construction would start pretty soon afterwards.
Any other questions from the commission? Alright, hearing none. The motion has been made and seconded to approve case number J21-0077. Cassie, will you take a roll call vote, please?
Fenobia Dallas?
Yes.
Robert Hanley?
Yes.
Yolanda Jones?
Yes.
Brenda Moore?
Yes.
Jack Nash?
Yes.
Jim Nightingale? Oh, sorry, Bill Ostas?
Yes.
Alright, the motion was approved.
Thank you. The next, sorry? Yes, okay. The next item on our agenda for new business is the discussion on R1 zoning. I will let the staff address that item.
Okay. I sent out a couple different pieces of paper. The one is a map of the current zoning, and I really highlighted the residential zoning so that it would pop out a little more. This discussion is coming from a request actually from Bill to look into some of the different areas that are zoned for more dense residential structures. And especially since we're going through the master planning process right now, this is probably a good time for us all to discuss. Maybe there are some boundaries that have changed in the last 10 years or so since these zoning districts were set. And yeah, I wanted to hear your guys' discussion. I also included this Covenant Neighborhood Association had submitted a petition to the Planning Commission back, does it say 2014? Well, it says originally 2007, where they requested swatches of that neighborhood be rezoned to R1 to stop larger homes from being divided up into multi-tenant units. So that's kind of the precedent that we have from this, from a neighborhood standpoint. Whether the neighborhoods would come forward and do this or the Planning Commission can make that decision. But I did want to let you know, we are getting close to doing the community input sessions. And one of the groups that is going to be talked to is NAG, which is all of the neighborhood associations in the city. So, but it's good to hear everybody's opinions as we're going through this.
Thanks, Cassie. I'll go first, being I was the one that was bringing it up. So I had, it came up in my neighborhood. We were talking about exactly what Cassie was talking about here. And years ago on the east side, they did the rezoning to R1 for exactly the same purposes. I was living in the Covenant Neighborhood Association when they rezoned that. And it was for those purposes because the homes were being turned into multi-unit in a lot of the larger, older homes. So when I looked at this map, I thought, wow, there's a pretty good area around here. So if you look at like Hoyt and Wedok, where I live, next to Central Middle School, I'm in R1, but if I walk across the street, I'm in R2, and we're still in the neighborhood. And that also became a concern for my neighbor across the street too, because if you're familiar with Tom Mudd, his home is actually in the R2, which then references his dad, Dr. Mudd, and the rest of the Mudd family, and we know the history there. So that was a concern of them as well, as they're getting to the point where they're thinking about selling their house, and they were concerned about that. Plus, I've had just a few more folks in the neighborhood that have approached me. But then looking at it myself, even if you look at like Lapeer and Janes on here, I was down in the neighborhood, kind of walked around, and there's some really nice homes over there. And some of them are, a lot of them are two-story homes, so they could have that potential there. So I don't know if anybody talks about it in the neighborhoods or if they have a concern. I don't know if there are current rentals there, maybe homes that are multi-unit. So I'm just looking for any kind of input to the conversation as well.
And we're doing, we're looking at this for what again, Cassie? Because I must have zoned out or something. I'm sorry.
It would go to, we would rezon it from R2 to residential. It would go to, we would rezone it from R2 to Residential 1. So the orange areas is what I was looking to. And I didn't have a chance to get down over by Washington Avenue and Weber and Center, however.
Yeah. So, yeah, really looking at, just having a discussion, see if this is still correct, how the zoning is right now, if that still fits the neighborhoods, or if some of them should be, yeah, rezoned to R1.
Right.
Or vice versa. Maybe there's some areas that are R1 that should be zoned to multifamily.
Okay. So, so in my opinion, it's just mine. I think that NAG and neighborhood associations, just like the Covenant, they brought it to our attention what they wanted to be. I think that that would be something that they can talk about and then bring it back. Because I guess I'm lost with that. What's the big difference? I mean, people, a lot of the areas, especially over in my neighborhood, they've been turned out. And so there may be one or two family dwellings over here, but they're limited. And so I, I, you know, but like I said, that's me. I don't know. Maybe it's just me.
Right.
I'm really trying to figure out what's the need, not that it's not one. You know? I was just curious, so. It's just mine. I say take it to NAG, the neighborhood associations, and, and let them talk about it, and then we talk about it, or we, how we can help them to make it better.
Okay. That's a good, yeah. That makes sense. No, it makes a lot of sense, Brenda, and I'm glad that Cassie brought that up because part of the master plan, when they go talking to the neighborhoods, that's the best place to get the input, kind of explain to them how it's zoned, and would you support us changing this? And then we could have that. That way you're there. And like you said, with NAG too, because that's a, you know, large in the city.
And you're probably going to get the active neighborhood associations at NAG, which would make the job a little easier.
Yep.
Then you can always visit the individual groups. I guess, I look at the three or four groups I go to. Since COVID, they really haven't been active, and a lot of them have even gotten sick or, you know, they just don't want to be bothered anymore. And I think it's really a neighborhood thing, not so much that this commission should just find work to do. That's just my opinion. You know, it's like, I know what that means, but I, I, I just think that we should start there, Cassie. I don't know how the group feels. And, and Bill, Bill has his reasons why he wants to do it. I heard him, you know, but everybody may not feel that way. So before we sit up and start conquering and redoing something, let's see how the community feels. That's what it's about. How are they feeling?
Yes. I think that's great. Yolanda? Go ahead.
Yes. Thank you so much. Cassie and Bob, can you just clarify maybe? Because I don't have it in front of me, but what's the difference between like the R1 and the R2?
Thank you, Mindy, because I was the last.
One of your packets. Yeah.
The main difference is that R1 is for only single-family homes. It doesn't really allow home businesses in the home for them. It does allow some, but it doesn't allow like daycares, except actually we need to re-clearify some of that because historically, daycares have been allowed there. The primary difference is that it's a single-family home, no duplexes, and no homes that are a single-family looking home that is separated into two homes.
And if we did rezone, like what happened with us in the Covenant neighborhood, when it was rezoned to R1, everything was grandfathered in. It was, the way our ordinance is written, so let's say if you move out of a multi-unit and it's vacant for a year, then it has to go back to a single unit.
So what do we do about, so what do we do about Airbnb? I mean, once snuck in here on us, what if we get that again? What if we get Airbnb? It's not really a one thing.
Essentially, Airbnb is not contemplated under the zoning code. They shouldn't be allowed in the city. They shouldn't be operating in the city.
I'm just saying, we had one that snuck in on us, okay? So I'm just saying.
Oh, they weren't registered. Yeah, that wasn't even registered.
Of course, sometimes, because they're, they're not listed publicly on Airbnb site by a person's name or address. So it's, it creates a bit of an enforcement haggle.
Yep.
So, so in essence, R1 is single-family. R2 is what? Duplexes? R3, R4 apartments or multifamily dwellings? Is that what we're looking at in terms of those codes?
Yes.
Yeah. So the, the, the definition, for example, of R2 is that it allows for two-family dwellings not to exceed one two-family dwelling per lot, except in a case of a multiple dwelling maintained since January, so that the non-conforming ones that were there prior. And then it also, it would allow other kinds of planned unit developments, but keeping with the same kind of density. In other words, you could have four units next to each other, but still have the same amount of, of setback and property usage.
Thank you. I'm going to have to review the ordinance a little bit closer. I actually spent 12 years in Carlton Township on their planning commission, and I know their codes. So I'm trying to make the transition to the city, so.
It's not that much difference, Dallas. Same thing. Don't try to make it sound like you gave up.
Any other questions or comments on the R1 zoning? Okay. The next item on our agenda is old business, where we're talking about other development updates.
Yeah. So we got something else coming other than the.
As Cassie mentioned, yeah. We, we do have some more site plan reviews, special use permits coming up probably the next month. As Cassie mentioned, we're probably moving into the public comment phase of the, of the master plan. And several of the groups have been identified, and we're trying to move forward. Likewise, the transportation plan, the parking plan, the housing plan have all been completed, and those will be talked about at some point in the future. And the only other thing that I'm working on now is, since I had, we had a little lull in some of these site plans, I started working back on the sign plan. So I'll probably be bringing that back to you, or the sign ordinance at some point, hopefully in the future. So that's all I have.
Okay. Next item on the agenda is adjournment. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
More.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded.
Not trying to stay here all night. Come on.
It's been moved and seconded to adjourn the meeting. Thank you, commission members. Everyone have a good evening.
Yep. Have a nice evening. Oh, we got to take a vote.
Did we, did we vote? Did we vote? I thought it was vote by acclamation. All in favor of adjourned the meeting?
Aye.
Aye. Hosts? Extinctions? Thank you, commission members. Enjoy the rest of your evening. We'll see you next month.